Until maybe, or, and I'm like, wow, these things are so.
Pots and pans that I'm using on an everyday basis are the creative products in my kitchen.
Those are the pans that we use every evening. We're gonna have the best pans in the world at one of the best restaurants in the world.
Another clue to Mr. Clean, struggling to clean up bathroom messes with sprays, if you've been to try Mr. Clean's magical risks, just let.
So, can you hear me now? So, I mean.
We can hear you, Chairman.
Thank you.
I can hear you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, evening, whatever.
It is that time, let me go ahead on and call the special call meeting for August 31st to order. As many of y'all recall, unfortunately, we lost one of our colleagues, Mr. Calvin Chip Jackson, since our last council meeting. Before we start our meeting, I'd ask that we, let's pause for a brief moment of silence and reflection, reference Mr. Jackson. Thank you, thank you very, very much. Let me now ask, Ms. Owen, to call the roll.
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Present.
Dickerson.
Present.
McBride.
Present.
Livingston.
Present.
Terracio.
Present.
Walker. Kennedy. Manning.
Here.
Myers.
Present.
Newton.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask, Chairman, for the roll call. Ms. Owen. Excuse me for a minute, I've got a sheet that I misplaced here. So, what's the next item on the agenda? I misplaced that first page of my agenda for right now.
Invitation.
By Ms. Terracio.
Thank you very much. Ms. Terracio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the moment of silence for Mr. Jackson. As I was thinking about the invocation tonight, I couldn't help but think this is the first time that we'll all meet together after his passing. And for me, that loss was really visceral as I thought about sometime getting to go back into chambers and maybe going into executive session and looking towards that split, that place that he would be filling. And so, I wanted to use this time to acknowledge the, the loss that we all feel at the loss of our colleague and to loss, to acknowledge the loss that so many people feel without the physical presence of their loved one. And that may just be because we can't physically be together, it may be because someone has passed. And so, while we have lost some physical connections and we have lost some certainty about our future, I wanted to extend this tonight. That may we all work together tonight to honor the memory of Mr. Jackson. May our work take seriously the loss people are facing in our communities and may it be filled with hope and purpose as we look to our future actions together. May we act with clarity of vision and may we act with charity and love towards one another. At this point, I'll lead the pledge of allegiance, if that's okay. Mr. Chair, okay, Ms., I'm getting the hurry up from Mr. Manning, thank you. So, if you are in a place to stand, please feel free to stand. And if you would like to make the gesture of covering your heart, please do so. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. Dickerson, for accompanying me so well.
You're welcome.
Thank you very, very much, Ms. Terracio. That brings us to item four on our agenda. Which is approval of minutes. First set of minutes is our regular session, July 21st. Chanting motion of the minutes for the July 21st meeting. If they move, proper the second, and discussions, changes, deletions. There being nine, Ms. Owen, can you call the roll for the approval of the minutes for July 21st?
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Walker. Kennedy. Manning.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. That brings to item four B, is only public hearing minutes for July 28th, chanting and motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of four B and C.
Motion is approved for the minutes for four B and C, C is the special call meeting for July 28th.
Second.
It's been properly second, discussion, reference the minutes for July 28th and July, well, put here minutes and special call meeting minutes for July 28th. If not, Ms. Owen, do you cover on?
Malinowski.
For the record, not being there for the entire meeting of July 28th, I'll have to vote no.
Okay. Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Walker. Kennedy. Manning.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item five, the adoption of the agenda. The last staff, is anything additional to the agenda?
Chair, this is Leonardo, the county administrator. I'm not aware of any additions on administrative side, sir.
Thank you.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Just one of, one quick point, other than chair's report, there's nothing required action, but I just want to inform the chair about the need to have to establish a meeting regarding the situation with elusive ordinance that require us to meet in a certain period of time. I just want to bring that to, I want to bring that to the council's attention with that particular point.
Mr. Chair, I didn't understand what you're saying.
You may recall that recently, the sheriff closed down a business based on our nuisance ordinance.
Oh, okay, alright.
And that requires certain action of council, since there was a request for a appeal here.
Alright, I understand. I didn't understand the first part, thank you.
Thank you.
I move for the adoption of the agenda, Mr. Chair.
The move, as amendment I stated, Ms.?
Yeah, as amended, with the amendment from the chair.
Mr. Livingston. This is only, we needed to add that engineering services for Blythewood, the EDC item that I spoke to you about.
I think I spoke with them about that, and since we didn't have backup information, we decided to defer to later meeting, because I didn't want to put it on since we didn't have the backup information.
I concur with you, Mr. Livingston, I have not been informed, thank you.
And I did speak with someone from EDC. Is moving proper second to adopt the agenda as amended, there's no further changes, Ms. Owen, cover on.
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Walker. Kennedy. Manning.
No.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings, that brings, brings us to item six on our agenda, which is a report of your attorney for executive session items. This is.
Mr. Chair and members of council, Mr. Chair and members of council, there's nothing under my report this evening, thank you.
I bring us to item seven, citizens of input for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing, Ms. Owen, do we have any citizens of input?
Yes, sir.
Item eight, that citizen's input must pertain to a Richland County matter not on the agenda. Ms. Owen, do we have anyone sign up for the second citizen's input?
Yes, sir.
That input, citizen's input not disclosed. That brings to item nine, report of the county administrator.
Yes, sir.
Brown.
For a few moments, I'd like to give you a brief update related to the coronavirus. First of all, I want to give you a heads up that over the course of time that we instituted the mask ordinance, the Ums Busman's office has received roughly.
Excuse me, Mr. Brown, it's a interference, it's hard to hear, I think it's someone's iPhone, though.
Right, I'll try again, Mr. Chair. I was giving you a brief synopsis of some of the calls that came through the Ums Busman's office, we had roughly about 131 citizens contact that office in response to concerns about the mask ordinance, that could be anything from people reporting individuals they have seen not completely covering their face, whether it's their nose or their mouth. That could include individuals spotting other individuals in facilities without mask. That could include restaurants or gyms, or even just folks out and about in groups. So, we received several different types of concerns from citizens. With that being said, we've had about 31 reported complaints where our fire marshals have actually gone out on site visits and they've issued about 28 orders communicating to individuals what the mask ordinance says and encouraging them to do the proper response in terms of the mask ordinance. So far, they did not give those individuals tickets on those initial go outs to, to speak with them, but we are going out and responding to citizens' concerns when we receive them through the Ums Busman's office. So, I wanted to let you know, our fire marshal, fire marshal's office is responding and visiting sites that come through that are in the unincorporated area of Richland County. Additionally, related to the mask, want to remind the council, early on, we talked about providing masks for the community. Your staff has gotten together through several of its departments, we have received masks and broken them down to be handed out to the community. We roughly have about 67,000 masks to be passed out amongst the 11 council districts, roughly 4,500 to 6,000 masks per council district. So, we can make arrangements with you to determine when and how you might want to pass those out, but again, those masks will be handed out in packs of two masks per pack, and they're in resealable packs, so it should be easy to hand out for citizens. So, I want to remind council and update you on that. So, again, that's roughly about 67,000 masks that you will have available amongst all the council districts to pass out to citizens as you see fit. Additionally, want to give you a heads up related to the request for reimbursement that we submitted through the state. We did go ahead and decide to sign the sub recipient agreement, don't know if you recall right offhand, but there were questions about whether or not we should sign that agreement, we went ahead and signed that agreement because we wanted to make sure that we at least had the right to try to get some of those dollars and, and later on, if you need to go another route, we can, but we did not want to lose out on that opportunity. So, we did sign that agreement that the state sent to participate in that reimbursement process. Also, want to give you a little bit of information related to testing. DHEC has informed me through their, their local facility here that they want to provide testing at the health department. Again, no specific dates or times have been given, I was just notified on today that that's something that DHEC wants to do at their health departments, if they want to be able to have people be tested at the health department. So, obviously, there'll be some coordination and some consideration taken into account what that may look like for people to be in a Richland County facility being tested for COVID-19. A few more things here before I finish with the report, Mr. Chair, related to testing. Want to give you some of the most recent numbers that you can find on DHEC's website. Start by giving you just a quick daily count over the last seven days, and then I'll give you the percent positive, and then I'll move on to one more bit of information. So, starting on 8/24, we had about 77 cases that reported positive. 8/25, 79, 8/26, we had 84 cases reported positive, this is specific to Richland County. 8/27, there were 76, 8/28, there were 112, 8/29, there were 195. On 8/30, there were 404 cases reported positive in that single day, then again, on today, there was 193. I'm going to give you some percent positives, so from the period from July 1st to July 15th, Richland County had a 22.6% positive rate. On 7/16 or 7/31, that date range, 26.2%. August 1st through 8/15, 23.2%, and August 16th through August 30th, up to 29.5%. And I share that with you because as we were talking about, looking at what Richland County might look like when we reopen or phase back in additional services that citizens may be able to come into the office. The team and I have been getting together seriously considering what they may look like, and then with these recent numbers, it is certainly going to be a huge slowdown on that, that thought process because these numbers are definitely going in the wrong direction. If in fact, 5% is the ideal goal, being at 29%, it's not going to cut it. And if, if having a, a 14-day downward trend is going to be the goal, then going up and having over 100 cases averaging the last three days, that's, that's not going to cut it. So, the last thing I'll say is, we received some information about testing as a strategy, and I'll just point this out to the, the council. Over the past couple of days, there's been certainly some questions about some of the testing information that we've received on the local level as well as the national level. And I point that out because one of the things I think is very key is to, how do you account for people who may not be showing signs or symptoms of COVID-19? We've received differing opinions on who needs to be tested. And that information you can find on the county's website, not the county's website, but DHEC's website, they have information about testing. And then so does the CDC, and so does a couple of other organizations, but those testing information has not been consistent across of the last couple of months. So, just want to share that with you as we look at how we're going to provide mitigation strategies for our, for our folks. Testing is a big part of that, in my opinion, but that information has not been consistent between the local, the national, and the state folks who are responsible for that information. So, members of council, Mr. Chair, that's going to conclude my report. I don't have anything else unless you have questions for me related to the.
Any questions, then, it's good for move forward.
Mr. Chair.
I have questions.
Ms. Myers, is that your voice I hear? Go ahead, you're recognized, then follow that to Newton.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown.
Yes.
You referenced certain policies with regards to the reopening, just a few questions regarding that. Has council adopted a policy in terms of the CDC guidelines insofar as reopening?
No, ma'am, we have not, council has not adopted a specific policy related to reopening or the CDC guideline.
Okay, has council adopted a policy insofar as the 5% number that you referenced?
No, ma'am.
All right, has council adopted a policy with regard to the targeting of any number insofar as reopening?
No, ma'am.
Okay, has, where would those policy recommendations that you just recited be coming from?
So those would be information, if you would accept what DHEC has put out or the CDC, that information would be the general guidance that they have put out for anyone who is looking at them for guidance.
So in terms of how Richland County moves forward, would you consider that it be necessary for the council to adopt the policy?
I would.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry, it's Newton and then Mrs. Teresio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, one of the things that you mentioned that the staff has been discussing is what reopening Richland County would look like. My question is, understanding that we don't have a policy and haven't answered those questions yet, what kind of discussions and conversations have happened and where do we stand in terms of evaluating how we might be able to provide more services remotely? Because there, it's not a dichotomy between only offering services in person or not offering the services. And so what is being done to, again, evaluate where we are, what services we need to provide and what it would take to provide more services now?
Very good question. So part of that conversation has been, what equipment do we need to procure? What services do we need to extend or to add on to so that more remote work could be done? So that information has been part of those discussions. You're absolutely right, it's not all or nothing, it's definitely a combination approach and we are going at it that way. So those two big key issues, one, equipment, specifically technology, and two, then associated with that technological equipment would be what extended services need to be added on to so that we could actually have individuals who could use those equipments or items that were procured from a technological standpoint, including more internet bandwidth by way of example.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And then just as a follow up, what you mentioned was equipment and then services. That presumes that we know which Richland County services we're going to offer now remotely. So my question would be, has there been a prioritization of what those services are that we need to ramp up providing now? And also, is there any kind of analysis that we could look at that says, these are the services that we normally provide in a non-coronavirus world? This is the utilization that we're providing right now? Is that information that you have and can share with council? And if you don't have it, is that information that you can provide?
Yes, ma'am, that's something that we'll be working on, being able to provide. As we were looking at potentially what phases we might be in in terms of, again, I'm saying reopening, that doesn't mean that, you know, everybody's back at the office in the physical space, but that would look at determining what services are normally high volume in-person services and how those volumes could be shifted to a remote style and to deal with those departments where that normally happens. And that we haven't done that with all the departments yet. Specifically, I could think of some of the offices such as your auditor and your treasurer. I need to meet with them to determine what services they feel that they're looking at that could be improved remotely. Also, we've got some information from the Ums Busman on what level of questions or concerns come in at a high frequency to help us as a platform to build from. So that's kind of why we know some of those departments that we need to get more information on.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Teresio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was also about remote access. I just wanted to ensure that we, if it was possible, we could both continue and possibly expand some constituent services because I have had folks calling me about those things. So thank you for that update.
Just one brief note on that. I've had some conversations with the administrator about particularly about reopening as well as evaluating how we're doing with the current online services. And as part of that meeting, one of the things to talk about doing is trying to schedule pretty soon an ad hoc committee meeting so that we can hash out some of these things in some detail once you work through them. So hopefully, we'll schedule that meeting sometime soon.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chair. Brown, does that complete your report?
Thank you, please my report, there are no other questions, Mr. Chair.
That brings us to the report of the chair. You all did receive a memo regarding the closing of a business regarding-
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, there's a report of the interim clerk of council.
Oh, I skipped that, thank you. Very much. Ms. Ollie?
Yes, sir, we don't have a report.
I still shouldn't have announced that, but thank you. That brings us to the report of the chair. Again, as I mentioned to you, you receive information regarding the closing of the businesses in Richland County per hour nuisance ordinance and that's the property of 7720 Caria Drive. Per hour ordinance, that person is entitled to a appeal hearing. And I did get a request from the owner of the property for an appeal hearing. Now, per hour ordinance, after a couple of days of due diligence on behalf of the county and our, on behalf of administrator and our business office, once that's completed, then council has seven days to set that appeals hearing. I just want to inform you that we're not sure when that will be, but you will be informed sometime soon about a date, trying to kind of agree on a date for an appeals hearing regarding this particular matter. Do you not know what that date is and gives to the court? Because I want to get feedback from council members. You get some feedback on that in the mail tomorrow as soon as possible. Let me know which of those dates work best for you so we can set that appeal hearing up.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just want to remind you as the council, whenever you choose that day, we have to remember, we have to notice the individual that has to be a part of the hearing process. So we need time to make sure we notice them properly. Just want to give you that heads up. So whenever you set that date, we probably need at least a couple of days to properly notice that individual.
Thank you. Any other questions about that item? If not, that brings us to item 12. Opening, close public hearings. We have one, public hearing, item 12, a authorized execution of the liberal fee in lieu of ever lowering taxes and infrastructure credit agreement and amendments of credit existing fee in lieu of ad luring taxes by and through Richland County, South Carolina and project courtroom to provide for payment fee of taxes authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. That public hearing is now open. Ms. Ollie, anyone sign up to speak to that public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no?
Yes, sir, there was no one that's-
Thank you. That public hearing is now closed. That brings us to item 13, approval consent items. And that's items 13, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Mr. Chairman?
May I?
Approve the consent items, 13, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second?
Motion to approve the approval of consent items.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Myers, you recognize?
Listen, yes, sir, I'd like, I'd like to remove item-
Which item, Ms. Myers?
Item E as in elephant. E as in elephant.
Thank you, thank you. Again, it's moving proper second, any others questions reference the consent items? If not, Ms. Ollie called the row for the consent items, that's A, B, C, D, and F.
Yes, sir. Bellanowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yeah.
McBride, yes.
Okay. Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning? Myers?
Myers, yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item 14. It's just third reading items.
Mr. Chair?
You recognize, Ms. Myers? I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Myers, that brings us to item 13E, which was removed. Ms. Myers, you recognize?
Thank you, I just have some questions, please, for the administrator and the utility staff. On page, obviously, to start at page 43 of our notes. And on those pages, it describes the fees associated with this portion of the project. Some of the utility staff, if we built exclusively what you all have described in this section, which is the lift station at the school and at Franklin Park, would it work if that's all we built?
Ms. Myers?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, have you recognized, I apologize?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Can Ms. Myers repeat her question? She was muffled, so we can't hear her.
Ms. Myers, can you repeat your question?
Is this better, is it, yes, sir, is it better?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so if all we built was what is described in the documents on pages 43 to 68, would the, would the system work?
Mr. Chair, John Thompson cannot be recognized.
Yes, Mr. Thompson, please go ahead.
Councilwoman Myers, the answer to your question is no, absolutely not.
Why?
Because you have to be able to build the infrastructure to get to the Eastover wastewater treatment facility.
And how much does that portion of the project cost?
The entire project is approximately $25, $26 million.
So if we built this standalone portion that consistently you all have described as the school portion, would the school be any better, would any of those schools be any better off today or middle of next year than they are today?
No, ma'am, absolutely not, not without the backbone to the system.
So does not the real cost of building the network that the schools need, that is primarily to feed the schools and clean up literally human waste off the site, isn't it necessary then to build the other parts of it to add to these direct portions on their campuses?
Yes, ma'am, you would have to build the entire infrastructure to convey the waste.
So isn't there a better analysis of what is what we're defining the school portion, some dollar figure that recognizes that you got to build a whole system and not just a pump?
Yes, ma'am, if only the school system were using it, but we understand that the community would be using it as well.
Let's assume that only the school system is using it. So if only the school system is using it, can we build just the pump on the school system, on the school property and have a working system?
Well, no, ma'am, you won't be conveying waste anywhere unless you build the backbone-
Exactly. And aren't the residential customers incidental to the school system, which is essentially the point? Aren't they, aren't they just being picked up because they're there? Are we, in other words, are we building a system for the school or for the community?
Based on reading the information, it seems like the system was built for the school.
Okay, if that is the case, I would like to understand why we have consistently stated this case as it stated here tonight, which is that only X amount will be used for the schools because it leads the public and others to believe that the schools are somehow being disadvantaged by this system. And I think that that is a little bit off base, am I correct?
Can you repeat that question again, Ms. Myers, about school being-
Yes, sir. To the extent that this project began because of the DHEC fines at the school and was conceived as a project to fix the three schools, Franklin Park and to service McIntyre, is it actually accurate to be describing the cost for the project to get to the schools as only the lift stations on the school property?
We would need more than just the lift stations on the property.
Exactly. So what I would ask is that we reflect the actual cost of building what is essentially this $30 million network to clean up the schools so that we get past this discussion of, is the county trying to make money on the back of the school? Rather, where we are is, this is a system that residents can join because we're going down their road. But it's primarily to fix these schools and get human waste off of their premises, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and so there would be no $30 million bond essentially, but for the fact that we're getting this waste off the grounds of the schools, correct?
Right.
All right, so I'm just suggesting that maybe the way this is written is too narrow and it is in fact misleading. Can I have a second? Just a few questions I'd like to ask the administrator. Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Outside of this project, outside of this project, what are Richland County's other multimillion dollar projects? That come close to this, outside of this?
I mean, this is-
I can think of only one.
Right, and that's actually, when you think about that project, and I believe you're referring to the penny. There is-
I think so.
Yeah, this is, this is going to be your next biggest by far.
Right. In that context, have we spent any time educating the public on this project? Outside of what council members have done? Do we have any plan that provides information to the public on this multimillion dollar project that's rivaled only by the penny?
We haven't, other than, you know, the few meetings that have happened so far, we don't have any-
You're talking about the meetings that I've been being, yeah, I'm talking about a public information plan from this day.
Not recently, no, ma'am. But I think that partly is because there are some questions at the same time that haven't been fully answered as well. But the answer to your question, the short answer is no.
Insofar as the penny, which is the only other multimillion dollar project that's disguised in spooks that the county has, do you have any idea how much we spend on public information for that?
No, ma'am, I couldn't answer that question for you, I don't know.
I know that it was at least $300,000 a year up until we got rid of the PBT. Does that strike you as close to correct?
I think I recall some, some numbers like that.
Okay. I just suggest that given the size of this project, that when we are representing it to the public, it might, well, first of all, it might be helpful that we do represent it to the public outside of the meetings, of course, that I've had and the meetings that Ms. Newton has had, and that there be some concerted effort to dispel what is a lot of miscommunication, misunderstandings, and misinformation that's in the public domain. And given that, that is exclusively the realm of the PIO office, to the extent that, you know, and council members do it, it's seen as inappropriate, I would suggest that there does need to be post case, a plan developed to make this community aware of the fact that those nearly, literally nearly 3,000 pipes that sit on various areas on the ground surrounding the- that sit on various areas on the ground surrounding that the construction area, and with all the earth movers digging up literally dozens of hundred-year-old trees every day, laying more than a hundred sixteen fire hydrants, clearcutting some areas to build lift stations, and with five separate teams that add up together to about seventy-five people in the area without one iota of information to the public, it does leave a lot of room for misunderstanding. And I would ask, as I have been asking for many years, I would ask that the staff focus its time and energy on educating the public about the county's second-largest infrastructure project rivaled only by the penny, and why it is critically important to get the human waste off the grounds of those three schools, and why it is helpful, not harmful, to the community where it will sit to have this project in their area. It covers more than thirty-three miles. And other than me and Ms. Newton, I don't think anybody's been beating the drum for it. So I just suggest that that might be something that needs to get done sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I am in favor of this, of accepting this money.
Now, um, do we have a motion on, 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 on this one?
I move to accept the million dollars, sir.
Well, it's for approval, item, um, thirteen E. Is there a second?
Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second for-
It's moving, it's moving properly, second for approval for item, uh, thirteen E. Is there any further discussion? If not, Mrs., um, only can call it all for item thirteen E.
Yes, sir. Melonowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes, that is for approval, yes.
Um, McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Torasio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning? Myers? Got you. Myers?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to, um, making item fourteen, which is third reading items. The first item is four, of the third reading item, item fourteen A, authorized execution deliverable fee in lieu of abularian taxes and infrastructure credit.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval fourteen A and B.
If both approve of fourteen A and B, um, fourteen B has to do with the transfer of certain property located in Blackwood Business Park to Fairfield Electric Corporation. Um, is a second for approval fourteen A and B. That, that is moving properly, second. Uh, discussion, reference to motion for, for fourteen A and B. Any discussion regarding fourteen A and B, Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I would like to take them individually because I've got two different ways on voting on each of these items. Should I make this?
Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
Motion is withdrawn. Uh, that brings us back to item fourteen A. Gent, and most item fourteen A.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval fourteen A.
Go ahead.
Moving properly, second for fourteen A. Any discussion reference fourteen A?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Torasio, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, while, uh, council has been briefed on this, is there anything more than we can share with the public since this is a second reading item? Um, that's my question. Thank you.
Third reading.
I know you did, there were emails and information that I know sent to colleagues about this item, but also someone to contact that had any more detailed questions about it, too.
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, at, at this point, is there anything more that we can share publicly?
Mr. Chair? I have to ask, um, Legal, Economic Development, reference that one, whether there's additional information that we have or we've gotten.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mr. Chair, um, this is Jeff Ruble with Economic Development. PIO has prepared a press release which they're planning on sending out should council approve third reading. They're planning on sending that out tomorrow morning.
Further questions? If not, uh, Ms., only can call it all for, um, item fourteen A.
Yes, sir. Melonowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Torasio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning? Myers?
Myers, yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item fourteen B, approving the transfer of certain property located in Blackwood Business Park, um, to Fairfield Electric Corporation and other related matters. Gent, and most item fourteen B.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval.
For approval?
Yes.
There's a second?
Second.
Moving properly, second. Discussion, item fourteen B. There been no discussion on item fourteen B? Um, Ms. Allington, cover on?
Yes, sir. Melonowski?
No.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Torasio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning?
Yes.
Myers?
Myers, yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us, um, to item fifteen on your agenda, Report of Administration and Finance Committee. Governor George Dickerson?
Uh, good afternoon and thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the report, uh, the first item we have is fifteen A, Little Jackson Creek Upditch Work Authorization and Award. Uh, and you will find that information on page one seventy-nine through one eighty-seven. Uh, surprised on my discussion at the, um, at the, uh, meeting, uh, on July twenty-eighth, the Administration of Finance Committee recommend, recommended to approve work authorization number ten, scope admin for additional consultant services for the Little Jackson Creek Upditch Hazard Mitigation Grant in the amount of one, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand five, eight hundred and fifty-six, fifty-three dollars.
You heard the committee's recommendation in discussion regarding the committee's recommendation. Uh, Mr. Malinowski, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of the questions I asked in committee, I wanna make sure that, uh, there's been no changes or that I did get the answer correctly. Uh, the particular retaining wall that we are going to be going into to rebuild, that is on railroad property, is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Thompson and Mr. Brown, would you all please address Mr. um, Melonowski's concern?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair John Thompson here. We have Ms. Anethia Williams and Director Maloney on the line. If they could address that question from Mr. Malinowski.
Hey, um, this is Anethia Williams. I, I am here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, the retainer wall is something that was put in on a small portion of the entire length of the upditch that we're doing the project on. It is not on the railroad side. It is on the property owner's side where the retaining wall is located. When we reached out to the property owner in the course of realizing the, um, site had changed, the property owner, um, informed us that the railroad put that in because his property was eroding away, but it is not on the railroad's side. Um, we haven't talked to someone at the railroad to confirm that they put that in, but it's on the property owner, the homeowner, um, who lives in the neighborhood side of the upditch.
Okay, then is there any reason that we didn't get that update? Because it says in the discussion, CSX built a retaining wall. And, uh, you know, so I'm just wondering if they built the retaining wall, the, uh, the belief was that it was on their property.
Um, I apologize for that misunderstanding. It was on the railroad's side of the upditch, but, um, the information that we have is that they did install it, um, to try to reduce that property owner's, uh, property from eroding away, but, um, it is on the, the side that's not on the railroad side of the upditch. It's something that we discovered during a site visit that it had been installed.
Okay, and there are some assumptions that are being made in this particular matter. Uh, one of them, it says no real estate services, uh, related to private landowners are, are gonna be needed. Is that correct or don't we really know the answer to that one?
No, that is correct. We don't have to, um, pay for any real estate or do anything like that. We're just getting the construction easements on both sides in order to be able to go in with equipment, but we don't have to, um, pay for right, um, outside of the CXX permit fees, which we are trying to get waived. We're trying to contact somebody at CSX. They haven't gotten back to us. There should be no other, uh, real estate costs or services.
Okay, also, Ms. Williams, it says that the scope of services assumes the upditch will not be considered jurisdictional waters, otherwise. When will we know that for sure?
Um, we submitted the request to the Army Corps of Engineers for them to look at that. Usually it can take a, a couple of months for them to get back to us on that jurisdiction. So, uh, unfortunately, we would not have gotten the answer before council meeting, but it's still based off of, um, looking at the site, the fact that it's a dry ditch, that, uh, we still do not believe it'll be considered jurisdictional.
Okay, if the, if it is determined that it's waters of the U.S., what more is going to be needed from the county in the way of, uh, costs?
Um, usually when it comes in that it gets considered jurisdictional, they may look at us to try to do mitigation somewhere else, so that may be something that comes into play. Uh, in other situations where we've done projects, we've been able to alter the work that we're doing or limited to try to avoid, um, having to do additional permit requirements. So if it does come back to be jurisdictional, that's when we'll probably just meet on site. We'll meet on site with the Army Corps, discuss more of the project and see if they have any other additional requirements that they would ask of us.
Okay, and, and I believe my last question is going to be, you somewhat touched on it already about the fees, uh, to paying the rate of entry permit necessary. We actually have to go onto the railroad property?
We won't be working on the, the technical property because the railroad property is just the tracks and the trellis. But because we'll be in the vicinity of it, we have to get, uh, the, the easement, the permit to go into what's considered their right-of-way, their easement area. So we do have to apply for that permit. Some of that is, um, fees to be in the area, additional insurance that we don't mess up, you know, the railroad with any equipment we're out there with. We have reached out to CSX to ask if, you know, again, bring up the fact that this is a project that benefits not only them, but also other citizens and see if they'd be willing to do something about the fees. Uh, we've gotten slow response. We've been told that, you know, they're not in office, the same kind of thing with reduced staff. So we're still working to try to find out if we can get any assistance on that, um, permit fee.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the committee's recommendations, so that's what, uh, I, we recommend.
Any, any further questions, reference committee's recommendation? There be none, I'll ask Ms. All, please call the role, reference committee's recommendation for item fifteen A.
Melonowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Livingston?
Yes, sorry. I said it loud enough.
Torasio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning?
Indeed, yes.
Myers?
Myers, yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to, this, this-
Uh, did, did I hear someone say something?
I'll say, go ahead on Ms. Dickerson, go ahead.
Okay, um, does that item need to be reconsidered? So the staff can move on? Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to reconsider that item.
Second.
Moving properly, second for reconsideration. Um, I'm asking Ms. All, call the role for the motion for reconsideration.
Melonowski?
No.
Dickerson?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Torasio?
No.
Manning? Myers?
No, ma'am.
Newton?
No.
Question fails.
If that brings us to item fifteen B, Ms. Dick-
And that is regarding the home detention electronic monitoring services. And you will find that information on page one eighty-eight through one ninety-two. The committee's recommendation, the ANF committee's recommendation to continue the electronic monitoring program and approve the award of a contract for the home detention services to offenders' management services, and that was the recommendation of the committee.
Third committee's recommendation, discussion.
Mr. Chair?
I have Ms. Myers and then Ms. Melonowski.
Just quickly, Ms. Dickerson, I thought we recommended approval for this year, extending for one year and then opening up, um, a bid and approval process to close by the end of next year when this contract, um, expired, when the one-year extension expires, is that?
Well, Ms. Myers, you are, you are absolutely correct. Uh, for some reason, that did not, that, those, that documentation did not get extended to this particular, to the notes, so that is the, that is correct. You're absolutely correct. Can you?
You want me to restate it?
Yes, please restate it.
Yes, ma'am. So the committee's recommendation was that we approved the extension of the current contract through the end of twenty twenty-one, and that during twenty twenty-one, we open a bid and procure, through the procurement process, that would award a new contract, um, by the end of twenty twenty-one. It's the new provider to begin in twenty twenty-two.
Uh, I second that. That is correct, Ms. Myers.
So you've heard the committee's complete, complete recommendation, okay. Great, Ms. Dickerson?
Yes, sir.
I have Ms. Melonowski and Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I did ask some questions and, uh, Mr. Myers provided me some answers. One of my questions was relating to the detainees and if Richland County was paying for all of them, uh, regardless of where they came from. His answer to me was that all general session slash circuit court detainees are county detainees regardless of the municipality. I would like to have an explanation of that because if other municipalities send them there, we in Richland County, unincorporated Richland County, certainly would not have been, uh, paying for them to, to, to be there. Right now, we've got requirements that whoever sends an individual to the jail, they have to pick up the daily fee for that individual to be there. So I'm wondering why we don't also have that carryover to this part right here that any additional fees relating to the person they sent there must be picked up by that municipality? And that would certainly, I would think, cut the cost to us that we're concerned about right now. Can anybody give me an answer to that, please?
Um, Mr. Melonowski, I would, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I would like to address Mr. Melonowski if he would like to amend the motion to include that so that we can move this item forward.
Well, we, we can include that, but I'm just wondering if there's something we can do now to get this moving forward prior to waiting for a year that Richland County doesn't continue to pick up the cost for other detainees sent by other municipalities.
Uh, is Mr., is Mr. Myers on the phone?
Let me just, uh-
Yes, I am.
Well, Mr. Myers, basically, the detainees that we have, the city of Columbia, Richland County, and since they are paying part of the portion, would they not be required to pay, uh, some of the costs for the detain, for the, for those monitors?
The only portion-
The only portion the municipalities pay is when they're all, when the detainees are charged with municipality offenses. Uh, they are not general sessions offenses. Once they're general sessions offenses, their bond is set, then the county takes the responsibility of it.
So does that mean we'd have to take responsibility if we do the home monitoring? I read your notes, but um uh, Mr. Malinowski bring up a very important part to that.
I'm not the legal authority, but I believe so. I would have to yield a bread or Mr. Smith.
Brad, are you there or Mrs.?
Uh, this is Larry Smith. Um, I think currently, um, Mr. Malinowski, um, your agreement that the county has with the municipalities just covers um the basics of the state of a particular detainee in detention center, meaning um, you know, food and um those kinds of things. I'm not even sure, because I think we had this discussion early in the year, how much in medical it covers. So in answering your question, I think it would require an amendment to the current agreements that we have with the municipalities regarding what they will pay to help defer the cost to the county for um the detainees that come to the detention center.
Okay.
And those and the, and let me just say one more thing. And those uh amendments, um, the county would need to take a look at each individual agreement that we have with the municipality uh to see what kind of language it has in it regarding uh when we can amend those agreements.
And and that's where I was going to comment on next, uh, Mr. Smith, because these agreements, my recollection is that if there's a change, it has to be done so many days prior to the expiration of the agreement. So if there's an agreement that's expiring in January, we don't want to wait a year from now and then start addressing it. I think we need to look into it immediately. So I would like that uh uh Councilwoman Dickerson made part of the motion that we direct legal to look into, immediately look into whether or not we can begin to charge others for the people they send there.
I I can accept it. I I can accept.
I was the maker, I was the, I was the maker of the motion. I was just gonna say I could accept that as a friendly amendment.
That's what I was going to second that, Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. But now I also would like to know, uh, was there any user input? We always talk about the stakeholders. Well, in this case, the stakeholders are the actual people that are having to use these monitors. Did we get any user input from these people? Any stakeholder input regarding this company?
If you're talking about the detained, so I'm sorry, may I recognize Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Myers again, you're speaking of the users, the person, the detainees that are placed, the electronic monitoring, um, displaced on the detain, no, sir, there was not.
Okay, well, also in our information, I'd like to know who uh two of the evaluators are, and that would be Dan Goldberg and William Bilton. Where are they from?
Those were the solicitors, um, personnel.
Solicitors personnel. The reason I say that is because when you look at the evaluations, those two individuals consistently gave the current provider way higher ratings than anyone else did and gave way lower ratings to the other uh applicant company that's there. And I find that hard to believe that there may not be some reason for that. Uh, if you take their ratings out of there, the second company, the corrective solutions, actually rates higher when those two ra- rankings, those two individuals rankings are removed. So I just find it difficult to believe that these two individuals. Are they the only people from the solicitors offices here, Mr. Myers?
Uh, yes, sir, I believe so, and one from the PD's office, which was Ms. Pringle.
Well, yeah, I I know who she is. Uh, okay, well, I just, I just find that unusual. So for that, for that reason, uh, I certainly, uh, I certainly can't support this because it seems like there's something else in the wind here, and I can't say what.
Be be careful, Mr. Myers.
I understand, that's what I'm saying. There's something else here, I don't know what, but uh uh, you know, we talk about an evaluation team comprised of various stakeholders for, they evaluated the submittals, but then we say, and maybe no uh detainees were included in here. They're the biggest stakeholders there are. They're the ones using this stuff.
Got to slam that door.
I have Mrs. Newton and this McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions as it relates to this. I know that the motion is about approving the vendor. My question is, as we look at our costs that are going up exponentially and problems paying for it, have we looked at, or perhaps has the magistrate's office looked at doing any type of analysis in terms of whom we're assigning this monitoring to? Or I guess maybe the better question is, what is the policy? Because certainly um we'll work on both sides to make sure that we're paying for the detainees, that it's appropriate for us to pay for. But my question is, as we look broadly at the program, um, what is governing who gets an ankle bracelet? Where certainly there's some people who definitely need some. I don't know if everyone who is currently getting an ankle bracelet or ankle monitoring from the county is somebody that we necessarily would want to be monitoring. And when I say we, I use that loosely because I don't know that we have the authority to determine that. But as we are footing the bill, I would be interested in seeing whatever the policy and guidelines are that are governing that program.
M- Mr. Smith?
Ms. McBride.
Help, Miss. Mr. Smith, will you be able to help Ms. Newton with that question, please?
Uh, Ms. Ms. um Dickerson, this uh within the discretion of the um magistrate to decide who they're gonna place on this monitoring program. Uh, I'm not sure of all of the um criteria that they use. I know that they typically would um uh consider putting somebody on that didn't commit a very serious crime, nonviolent crime. I know that those are some of the crime criterias that they utilize in in order to determine whether or not a particular person coming before them uh would uh best suit um this particular program. It's based on the nature of the, of the offense that they've been charged with. What other criteria they use uh in order to make that determination, I'm not certain.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And while certainly the making of the criteria is theirs, I would presume though that it would be in our purview to understand what those criteria are and how they conform to best practices in other areas. Would that be correct?
Yes, ma'am. I think that that would be correct to, in terms of evaluating the 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 cost benefit analysis to know exactly what it is that they're utilizing as a criteria and whether or not it's a consistent kind of criteria that's applied by uh the magistrates involved.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And and Ms. Dickerson, I'm not asking these questions to to derail what we're trying to do here. But as we look at negotiating an agreement, depending on what we work out, for example, if, you know, costs go down because other municipalities are paying them or if fewer people um need to be monitored once the policies are reviewed, I don't know how that would affect whatever agreement that we are planning to negotiate. Thank you.
Brad?
Mr. Chair, I just want to comment on on two things. Um, Ms. Newton's issues is one, sorry, to Ms. Newton, and I agree with you one hundred percent in in God, in regards to the best practices because it states that they're either low-risk, nonviolent adults that you and I offenders. So are we using it um to the extent that we don't need it? And um the other part of it is Mr. Malinowski. I saw the same thing that you saw when I was reviewing the evaluators. And um this has really been a major concern of mine in terms of having blind. So you don't know what you're, you know, who's redoing what. A major concern. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And um oftentimes with with Grant, I don't want to say oftentimes. We have two people that are sort of matching their scores. Um, that does raise concerns, especially when you go high up on one and then low on the other. And then um working with grant reviewers, I know that that does happen. So I just wanted to let Mr. Malinowski know that he was not alone in noticing um evaluations.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Malinowski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. One last thing I wanted to ask, and I did ask in the committee, I want to make sure that I that I got the answer correct, and that is when it came to cost proposal. Uh, my recollection, I was told that the higher the number, the higher the cost. In other words, right now offender management has a higher cost to the county than the corrective. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Myers, can you, uh, Mr. Mr. Myers, can you answer that question, please?
That would be a perturbing question. I cannot say for any cert, uh, what was the criteria for that?
Good, good evening. This is Jennifer. Can I be recognized?
Yes, please.
Um, this is Jennifer Ladishkin, procurement manager. And um, Mr. Malinowski, I believe I misunderstood your question um when you asked that in committee. The um higher the score they received for cost, the better their cost proposal was or the less expensive their cost proposal was.
Okay, thank you.
So the the higher score would indicate the better cost proposal.
Thank you. We don't have those numbers up, correct?
Um, no, unfortunately, I'm traveling today and I don't have those numbers, but I can be sure to send those to you tomorrow morning.
Okay, that'd be good. Thank you.
In further discussion, I remember the um was the motion not amended, I think um?
Yeah, it was amended and second. Yes, sir.
In further discussion.
With regard to the questions that Mr. Malinowski raised, which are very good questions, and so far as the the user experience and how um the people who are actually um laboring under sort of the um ankle monitors um experience them. Is it possible that i- if Fielding Pringle is on the line because she works with, um, her office works with the the people who would have been determined indigent and for whom we'd be paying, if she has any anecdotal information, would this, would it be an appropriate time to hear from her?
Well, now.
I think we need to look at it for the next time.
Yeah, because we, right now.
No, I I'm I'm agreeing. I I agree, Ms. McBride. I just don't know if, given that, I I was actually moving to the next stage, which is if what we're saying is we are not sure that the scoring included everyone that it shouldn't be, it may well be that I wanted, I want to amend my motion. That's why I asked me if she was available.
Okay.
Because Mr. Malinowski raises an excellent point.
He does.
You know, your support of it was persuasive as well.
Right. So what are you, what?
Because if everybody's complaining, if everybody's complaining about it, but we've ignored that in terms of extending this contract, I think that's important information. If she doesn't hear many complaints about it, then that means that, you know, maybe they are pretty good at what they do. But she would have heard just because of her position representing all the indigent um in Richland County. And those defendants, you know, haven't been convicted of anything, so it's important to know what their experience is with this company.
I agree with you, Ms. Myers. I understand. So, Ms. Myers, do you need to amend the mo-
If she's on the line.
Hold on a minute. Let me make sure I'm 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 clear in terms of, in terms of where we are. Um, Ms. Myers, are are you speaking to amend the motion or do something? Are you just making points about it so I can kind of figure out where we are?
I'm not certain. I'm not, and that's why I was asking the other team for the Pringle, because Mr. Malinowski and Ms. McBride were very persuasive. Um, and it does concern me that we might have completed any valuation and be moving forward with a company where, you know, the the evaluation was skewed in one direction. And so I would not like to be the maker of a motion if the evaluation was skewed in such a way that we are now essentially um propping up um bad service across the county. So I wanted to to see if there was any way we could ascertain, even anecdotally, if the experience with this company by the people who are are having to wear these um ankle monitors um was consistently good, consistently bad, in between, up and down. I don't know. I just don't want to be, um, I don't want to put forward a motion having heard from Ms. McBride and Mr. Malinowski that there are significant questions about the quality of what it is that we're doing.
So you asking a question regarding that to somebody?
Yes, I'm asking if Ms. Pringle has, if Ms. Pringle has any information that might enlighten us as to how indigent people in Richland County um are experiencing uh the use of the the ankle monitors from this company.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. What the question in there. Okay, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized?
Please, Ms. 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 Myers, I have a question. I want to see if someone's on the line to answer Ms. Myers' question.
I was gonna ask, Mr. Chair, may I be recognized on this particular, at this particular point?
Let me see if there's anyone first who could answer Ms. Myers' question.
All right.
This is, Ms. Ms. Myers, you referred to Ms. Pringle, was it?
Fielding Pringle, yes, sir. Okay, they're done, not a, okay.
So you recognize, Mrs. Dickerson?
Well, if this, we have a lot of questions on this particular item, so I would make a motion to defer this item to our next council meeting. Hopefully, we can get uh some updates and some clarity on a lot of the questions that are being raised. So I would like to make a motion to defer this item to the next council meeting.
Let me ask a question for clarification in terms of
Time sensitive.
Time sensitive, whether or not this mean, you you know, you don't have rights. Can can um someone tell me what this mean by not moving forward with this? From staff.
Director Myers, can you respond to that, please, sir?
What are the consequences if not moving forward this? Because we'll, we'll meet again.
You still have time. The contract is not up until February, excuse me, October the first, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so you still have time.
Okay, good. Did you hear that, Miss Dickerson?
So, yes, so my motion is to defer this until our next council meeting, and we could have all this.
Is there second to the deferral?
I'll say it, Mr. Chair.
It's it's moving property second for the deferral. That's not debatable. Uh, Ms. On can call for the deferral.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning? Myers?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. That brings us to the report of the uh, you know, valve committee. I don't care. That don't have anybody. Um, first item is item sixteen A, authorized extension of the term of a fee and lieu of practice dated as September one nineteen ninety-nine by and between Richland County, South Carolina and Tri-Ramix LLC. Um, the committee recommendation was to approve that. And and that what that mean is is provide a um five-year extension to the fee and lieu of practice that I don't continue to be business in Richland County. And the committee recommendation was to approve. Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
It's um, Myers, you recognize?
I have no comments on the committee's recommendation. Thank you. I'd just like to acknowledge it. Uh, this one, I know we did it earlier, but I'd just like the record to reply to that. So I am exceptionally grateful for how Mr. Jackson um guided the Economic Development Committee and the work he put in with keeping all council members informed um of what was going on and how careful he was um to make sure that he brought people along with matters of importance to the county.
I agree. Thank you, too. In further discussion, reference item 16A, Ms. Malinowski recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If Mr. Rubel is still on the line, I'd like some clarification on this one, because I was reading in the information and it's on page 205 of our agenda where it said investment period, and said the investment period was through December 31, 2007. And everything that I kept looking at seemed like it was old information from a previous file. I didn't see the actual current information where they're asking for the extension, or at least I'm not really understanding why they want the extension. What are we, what are we getting out of it? What are they required to invest, any additional employees? I just like that explained, please.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Malinowski. So the original fee and lieu was issued in 1999, and that was based on an $8 million investment. And the county has the ability to create a five-year investment window, but the county can also extend that, which they did for up to eight years. So they had eight years to invest. They have accomplished that investment, so they achieved what they said they were. We're now at the end of the term of their fee and lieu agreement, so it was a 20-year term. They've asked us to extend it another five years. If council decides not to do that, and that means all their property would go ad valorem, and their property taxes would jump dramatically. The company came to us originally to our existing industry program and said, we need help. We have new investors, we're trying to turn the company around. We just need a little bit of help from the county extending this fee for another five years until we can turn things around. We anticipate that they'll make further investments at the plant, but this was sort of a stopgap measure during the middle of this pandemic. So that was the conversation that occurred at the Economic Development Committee when they made this recommendation. I hope that answers your question.
I guess what I'm hearing is that all of the original agreements have been completed and done properly, and there's really, I don't, I don't see anything for the county at this point in time other than giving up additional taxes to try to make somebody feel good out there, I guess. Would that be right?
Well, yes, sir, your taxes in that area are pretty high. So if you, if you kick them out of the fee, their taxes will jump, and you run the risk of bankrupting the company, or at least asking them to move to another county. If you extend the fee, it doesn't cost the county a whole lot of money, and they're saying that if we do that, there's a good chance they'll make additional investments.
Okay, can you tell me approximately ballpark figure what it will cost the county either annually or for the whole five years?
Mr. Malinowski, I apologize, I don't have those numbers in front of me tonight. I can get those to you. I can do it tomorrow morning.
Okay, is this going to be a three reading item?
No, sir, this is by resolution.
So it doesn't make any difference if I have those numbers or not, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Ms. Dickerson, you recognize?
Mr. Rubel, how many employees does this company employ? I forgot, I don't remember seeing that anywhere, I may have missed, and I'm sorry.
And Ms. Dickerson, I apologize, we took this up at the Economic Development Committee back in July, and I've forgotten some of the details myself. If I recall, their employment has fluctuated. They took a real hard hit in 2008 with the housing crisis, and they dug their way back out, they've tried to increase employment, but I don't think I'm incorrect in saying they have struggled. They are now at a point where they're getting outside investors to come in and help them invest and resurrect the plant. And I think you might know where that facility is, it's on Two Notch Road.
I think I do, I think I do, but I just can't, I'm just trying to remember some of the lower details regarding the number of employees, because I don't really want to do anything to hurt employees at this particular point in time, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and I would give you an answer, but I'd be guessing, and I don't want to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems to me right now that the council doesn't have complete information. We don't know what it's going to cost the county over the next five years. We don't know how many employees they have, we don't know if they got two or 202. This is something that we should have all this information and know. Now, I can understand that the company maybe fell on hard times during the housing crisis that occurred several years ago, but you're now asking the taxpayer to come up with the funds to keep a company going when certainly in the period we are in right now, many of the current businesses and taxpayers are also starting to fall on hard times. And so therefore, I think prior to making this decision, we need all this information. And based on that, I'd like to make a motion to defer this to the next committee meeting, I mean, next council meeting.
I'll second it. I'll second that, Mr. Malinowski.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Moving properly second for the deferral, that's not debatable. Ms. Onliner can reach over?
Yes, sir, Malinowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Tratio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
The motion passes.
That brings us to item 16B, consenting to the ratifying, the partial assignment and assumption of a fee and lieu of practice and incentive agreement from PPT Real Estate Enterprises, LPN, NL Ventures, Nine North Point LLC, and other related matters. What this is, is what we're doing is just simply taking a current fee and lieu situation and transferring it to the new company. It doesn't cost any of anything, just that the new company is taking over. The committee recommendation was approved. And keep in mind, committee, that decent. Committee recommendation approved discussion, Mr. Malinowski recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Rubel, in the information provided, it says that the company was to cause to be invested at least 25 million and create at least 150 new jobs back when this started by the end of the compliance period. Was that done?
Yes, sir, it was. There was a small, I take that back, there was a clawback of $45,000, which they wrote us a check for a few months ago. So that was the balance of anything that they didn't achieve. But that's all been resolved, and they're now free and clear to transfer the property.
Okay, and I noticed in their minimum job requirement section where we were describing different things, it says in there that the creation of at least 150 new jobs without regard to jobs maintained. So I read that to mean they can be here today and gone tomorrow, and they fulfilled their requirement. Have you done any additional research to find out of that 150? How many may still be there, if any?
Yes, sir, there's about 250 to 300 at any given day these days. And you're right, you're smart to point that out and catch it. That was a flaw in the negotiating. I wasn't around then, but I can tell you, they should have had a maintenance agreement in there. Somebody missed that when they were negotiating the deal.
Okay, that's all I'm finding, then, Mr. Rubel, thank you.
Further discussion? If not.
Follow up to Mr. Malinowski, sir?
Ms. Myers, you recognize?
Yes, sir, Mr. Rubel?
Yes, ma'am.
If we're at the point of approving, if we're at the point of approving a transfer, why wouldn't we adopt the language Mr. Malinowski just suggested as a condition of the transfer?
Well, I guess that would.
As you've described it, it's a flaw in the contract, so why wouldn't we adopt it now?
So essentially, that deal's done, well, I'm sorry, that's not necessarily true. That deal was cut back in 2012, I think. So we'd have to go back in and amend an old contract.
That's the point I'm making, that why not?
Yeah, we're not asking the county to give up anything, we're just asking the county to allow them to transfer some property to a third party.
Well, that is asking the county to give up something. You approved one company, they want to transfer to another, and so to the extent that you're negotiating a contract, that's a substantial right, and you can negotiate for whatever you want in exchange for that, we don't have to give them the right to transfer. And you and Mr. Malinowski just raised what is obviously clearly a flaw in the document, and to the extent that tons of people are being put on the street, I think that it's a good idea to put that in since it was left out, and you said that it was done by your predecessor, and you certainly wouldn't negotiate this kind of deal, so why not clean it up, old fool?
I'm sorry, I didn't explain that, I explained that incorrectly. So the $45,000 they paid was a clawback related to the earlier deal, and that resolved all the issues related to this. There's, that deal is no longer, no longer holds with the county. So we made them resolve that to our benefit for them to pay us back before the Economic Development Committee recommended this to council.
Let me just.
Thank you, I accept that.
Let me just say to my colleague, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Myers, go ahead.
No, sir, so just, Mr. Rubel, the first part of what you said, I think is absolutely, I agree with, thank you so much for that. Second part was when Mr. Malinowski asked, well, they could have, you know, 250 employees today and 100 tomorrow, and they would have fulfilled their requirements under the contract. And you responded, yes, sir, that is true. We would not negotiate such a contract today without language that did not allow for that, and that this was negotiated prior to your coming, and you would put in that kind of language in your contract as standard. Given that they've asked to transfer this, given that they've asked to transfer this contract, and that is a flaw in the original agreement, and something that could stand to disadvantage Richland County employees who are working at this company, would it not be prudent then to accept what Mr. Malinowski has said? And then to say, upon approval, we would amend the contract. Our approval is contingent, contingent upon an amendment to the contract that recognizes that you have to maintain this level of employment. And that's how you get the fee, how you sustain it and transfer it.
Mr. Rubel, look, keep in mind, what we're doing is we're just simply changing the ownership. Mr. Rubel, let's assume that peer power decides to just continue doing business as they've done it, and not change of new ownership, everything would remain the same, would it not?
Yes, sir, it would.
So that's all we're doing is just, in this case, just changing the ownership, you're not costing county any more or less money. In further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't misunderstand that, I understood that when I asked my question. My question still stands.
Further discussion? If not, I'm going to ask, Ms. Onliner can call over for.
Mr. Chair, my question was not answered.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
Whether or not it's your talent, yeah, my question still stands. Wouldn't it be a good idea that Mr. Rubel to have that as a future?
It wouldn't be a good idea to have that in future, what you're saying, I think, was that clear, what you said, Ms. Myers?
No, she wants to amend it.
Yes, ma'am, I understand your question. I think ideally, we would have had that in, and looking back, and if we had to do it over again, going forward, it's, that's no longer an issue. So they paid, they paid their penalty. So the employment number is no longer in effect.
Yes, it is, if they transfer it, and if we make it in effect. If not in effect, they're asking for something, so when they're asking for something, we get the right to ask for something, too.
Yes, ma'am, I tell you what I can do, I don't have anybody from Parker Poe on the call with us today. I might have to go back to them and explore that, it's not a simple, it's not simple enough for me to be able to answer your clear cut about what our options are.
I'll have to be able to ask Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, am I off stage here, sir?
Ms. Myers, I'm not familiar with this particular transaction, but I would just say generally, whenever you're negotiating something, they're coming to you asking your approval to do something, as I understand it, to transfer this property, then that typically would trigger you going back in the form of some type of counter offer, if you wanted to, to place some conditions, if they were appropriate, on your approval process. But again, I'm not familiar specifically with this particular transaction. So given your question, it certainly seems to mean that to the extent that there is a potential for the county to be in a position to ensure that the job level, that the employment level stays at a certain range, it seems to mean that that's at least worth exploring to determine whether or not that's a provision which could possibly be included in this transaction.
You say have the floor, Ms. Myers? Myers, you say have the floor?
Sir?
I say you say have the floor via each follow-up question, whatever.
Oh, I was just saying, thank you, how urgent is this? When does it, when does they want the transfer?
Rubel, did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, Ms. Emily Luther's been handling their attorneys. I think it's not terribly urgent, if we need to wait another meeting, we can do that.
Mr. Chair, as the chair of the Economic Development Committee, are you opposed to waiting for the next meeting for this one?
Not if the body wishes to extend it up to a period of time, but we need to know what is it that we, what we don't have now, we will need at the next meeting, though, we need to determine that in between.
Okay, then with that, I would move to defer this to the next meeting to see if in fact we could get that kind of language included.
Thank you.
Moving properly second for the deferral. And now keep in mind, too, we need to be clear on what we need before we get back here the next time, though, in terms of making sure we're communicating with everybody. This moving properly second for the deferral, that's not debatable, Ms. Onliner can call over for item 16B.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Tratio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning? Myers?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, that brings the item.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask a question, that all of those questions that were asked, that we, that they be addressed by the time we come back, and not, that they get answered. So can we go through this again, please?
Certainly support that, yes, thank you. Item 16C, authorized approving, ratifying, and consenting to the partial assignment of assumption of an infrastructure credit incentive agreement from PBT Real Estate Enterprises. This is, well, this is North Point, I'm sorry, this is a different, North Point LLC and other related matters. Is this not related to peer power, too, Mr. Rubel? Mr. Rubel? Mr. Rubel, can you hear me?
Mr. Chair. Sorry, sorry about it, I couldn't get to my mute button, yes, sir, it is.
So does that, does that mean this needs to be deferred, too?
More than welcome to, the two go to hand in hand.
I'm going to defer this one.
That's my question, yeah. That's the motion for the deferral.
I'll second it.
Properly second. Moving properly second. Ms. Onliner can call over for the deferral?
Yes. Malinowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
No.
Tratio?
Yes.
Walker? Kennedy? Manning?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to, um, other items. The first item is, um, our face mask ordinance extension. Remember, call per, um, state statute, um, um, we're going to set that for sixty-one days. The sixty-one day period, I think, will end, um, on September sixth. So what's reported is, is whether or not we want to extend, um, that face mask order. So.
Chairman, I move that we extend the face mask ordinance for another sixty-one days as written.
Second.
Move proper second. Uh, Ms. Raceo and Ms. Malinowski.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I had my hand up from another time.
Thank you. Mr. Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, do we have any new information, new statistical data? We passed an emergency ordinance sixty days ago, based on information that I saw was cited here, uh, next to all the different wherethes. And that information was gleaned on the dates from three eleven to three twenty-seven, quite a while ago. And, uh, on June twenty-fifth, there was some generalized information, but nothing specific. So that's over two months ago. So to just automatically, uh, approve a continuance of an ordinance without new information, I, I don't think that's proper. Do we have anything new, or was this just, here acts the old one and let's move forward with it?
Uh, yes, I, well, I can only speak for myself. I'm basing on a whole lot of new information, um, and facts from these and other sources.
Correct, but it's not in our agenda.
No, it's, 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 it's not, it's, it's not in our, so.
All right, well, I, I've got another question here, and there is a South Carolina code. It's sixteen dash seven dash one ten. As of twenty nineteen, that code was still in effect. And it reads that no person over sixteen years of age shall appear or enter upon any lane, walk, alley, street, road, public way or highway of this state or upon the public property of the state or any municipality or county in this state while wearing a mask or other device which conceals his identity. Now, if that is still in place, then we are in violation of a, you know, we, we stand to violate the state ordinance as it is there.
I think somebody knows also states too that, just, I'll let legal speak to that if, if it violates states on what it means.
Okay, so, so Mr. Malinowski, if you recall, uh, the Attorney General, uh, issued an opinion that, uh, counties, uh, did have the authority on the home rule to, uh, issue, um, uh, face mask ordinances. And in, within that opinion, they also opine that that particular section of state law was not applicable because most of the devices that are used as masks don't cover or don't, um, prevent you from identifying the person that has the mask on.
Really, Mr. Smith?
Yes, if you, if you, if you. If you, well, no, I mean, if, if you were walking down the street with a mask on, I still know that that's Mr. Malinowski with a mask on.
Well, because you know me, but if law enforcement came up and said, uh, let's do a caricature.
Well, that's correct.
You know?
Well, that's correct. It, it says, if, if, if it, um, uh, if it hides your identity, that's correct.
Well, that's what I believe these masks do. We also don't have any, uh, any set of, uh, guidelines as to what is considered a permissible mask. Uh, it, it says it has to be a face covering. I can put a piece of cheesecloth over my face and that's a face covering. Uh, I, I think individuals need to be able to think on their own and act on their own without the government always stepping in and telling them what to do. And I believe that's why the governor didn't issue a state notice. I think, you know, if, if people feel they should wear a mask, they should do it. I mean, I, I wear it every time that I go out. I don't have a problem with it. But I also think that this is a matter of individual businesses and government agencies putting on their own entrance ways that masks are required. If someone comes into this county from anywhere else in the state or out of state, they have no idea there's a mask ordinance, but they would know it when they went into a business if that business put that on their front door. So therefore, I don't believe that, uh, that we should be passing such an ordinance, as I said, because we don't have new information. The most recent information I'm seeing is that only six percent of, of deaths occurring from COVID are actually from COVID only. Ninety-four percent are because of underlying reasons being involved with this. Not so sure.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes, sir.
In terms of any, that, let me, let me just, in terms of any new, new information, I think part of that new information, uh, came from, uh, the report that was given tonight by the county administrator.
Right.
Uh, whenever we, whenever we passed the face mask ordinance in June, I don't know that we had a positivity, positivity rate, uh, uh, like we have now. Uh, whenever we, whenever the, the governor issued his stay at home order, the positivity rate at that time was between four and five percent. Uh, today, it was up to fifteen point five percent. Yesterday, it was twenty-one percent. Um, so I do think that based on, and yesterday, I think, based on what Mr. Brown said, uh, Richland County had its highest number of positive case since, um, uh, they started, uh, tracking this information. So I, I do think that, that we do have new information.
Well, we have new information, which was given to us at the eleventh hour and not in the agenda packet or not even separate to be in accompaniment to our agenda. Uh, we also have positivity rates increasing when you're talking about pool parties that were been, and, and other parties where nobody's abiding by social distancing either.
Mr. Mal, Mr. Mal, not due to time, I might add someone else. I'm going to recognize somebody else in a minute.
Well, go ahead and recognize him.
I want to make sure you're through, though.
No, no, I'm just saying, the positivity rate is not only due to the lack of wearing face masks because if the positivity rate is that high and there's a face mask ordinance, it's obvious that ordinance, that face mask ordinance is not really doing any good. Uh, it, it, it may be doing good, but it's not doing what we want it to. And nobody said a word about getting passed an ordinance about social distancing. Maybe that's what we need to do instead. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Matt, you recognize. Mr. Matt, you recognize.
Uh, I'll.
I, I asked for the.
You, you, you go ahead. You, you recognize not as Dickerson.
I said I call for the question.
Yeah.
Is that second call for the question?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Moving proper second call for the question, um, Mrs. Onlinen, you, you called the role for calling questions, re- reference this item seventeen A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Walker. Kennedy. Manning. Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, what's reported is, is item seventeen A, where you call the role for item seventeen A regarding the face mask extension.
Yes, sir. Malinowski?
No.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Was definitely yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Walker. Kennedy. Manning.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes, and I would make it clear that cheesecloth is not a mask.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item seventeen B. Memorandum of Understanding. So I have the comment, um, Mr. Brown, let's figure that one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I believe we have IT on the line. There was an update that was requested to be made on this item. But if I have, uh, Mr. Dale working on the line, let him speak to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, uh, an item where the comment is asked, uh, GIS department to put their route and stop on their, uh, one of their map pages. Well, we did, we brought the MOU before council. It's been some months ago. I think it was actually around December of twenty nineteen. It was approved. After which, uh, the comments attorneys had some concern about some of the language, uh, particularly in the indemnification area. Uh, Mr. Farah took a look at it and we talked about it. And Brad wrote some language to address those concerns. And so we brought it back before you again to see if you would be willing to approve attachment two, which has the, uh, language that Brad wrote in, in red.
Thank you, um.
Mr. Chairman.
And you recognize.
Thanks, sir. Uh, so have we checked this with their attorneys?
Uh, yes, sir. They are, they will, uh, accept this as written.
Okay, I move to approve with the Legals additional language.
Second.
Moving proper second to prove the, the additional language. Um, Mr. Malinowski, you recognize.
Hey, Mr. Chair, we're, we're told in their staff's recommendation, the fiscal impact, it says the soft cost of Richland County would be a few hours of GIS labor per quarter, which is considered negligible. I'd actually like a, uh, financial number put in there. What is negligible, negligible to you may not be to me or someone else out there. Can we get an approximate figure?
Mr. Malinowski, it would take approximately one hour a quarter.
I would consider that negligible.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, and, uh, also then, uh, I wanted to know over here on page three twenty-seven hour of our agenda, where it says, "The comet will be responsible for any damages to the comet's or any third party's computers." Is Richland County considered a third party in this?
Hey, this, this is Brad. This is Brad Farah from Legal. Um, if I may, I can, yeah. So basically, when the agreement came back, the comment proposed some language that said, you know, we, we will indemnify the county if, you know, if they cause any damages to anybody, i- it is so long as it's not the county's fault. So they're, they're, they're indemnifying the county for any type of damage, so long as the county didn't cause the damage. And the only really scenario where the county would have any problems is if, if they sent some information and we in incorrectly posted it online for some reason. And I can't imagine how that would happen unless we tampered with what they sent over. But, uh, it's basically just showing some bus routes and, uh, with the standard disclaimers that the IT folks will put on their webpage. And it's a pretty straightforward deal, but I, I had no concerns with what they proposed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farah. Uh, the, the last question I had was on page three thirty-three of our agenda. Last page, there was some highlighted, uh, wording from a previous A and F committee meeting. And it said that, uh, the committee recommended to approve the MOU. That was back in December of twenty nineteen. Is this the same MOU? Because Mr. Welch just said that it wasn't that long back, I didn't think.
Yeah, yes, sir. It, it, it is a bragging. It is the same MOU. This, uh, you know, it's kind of the old song, kind of got lost with the COVID deal. But this, this was something that, uh, I guess Dale's predecessor at IT was kind of, uh, the, the point person on. And, uh, she, you know, is, is not presently here, so it just kind of got delayed, but it is the same MOU.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Malinowski. Any further discussion? If not, is the moving proper second for accept the changes, um, for legal and staff, um, Ms. Onlinen, call roll.
Yes, sir. Malinowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
McBride, yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Walker. Kennedy. Manning.
Yeah, this one's going to be okay by me.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item eighteen. I think there, there are no exact decision items, correct? Mr. Smith, but that's correct, right?
That, that, that's correct. That's correct.
And that brings us to the, um, motion period. I have one motion, unless there's some I don't have. Um, uh, once counsel proves an action, uh, no council members, uh, is anybody to go, um, to, to staff member in an effort to, um, accomplish change, something that was not in the approved information action by counsel. Smell that. You got a recommendation, recommendation for, committed for that one, because that, that's something you can't do anyway, so I don't know what, what I wanted to do with that.
I've heard from staff members that has happened. I would send it to rules to be incorporated there, please.
Thank you. I'll send it to rules. Um, any other items that comes our motion for adjournment?
Second.
Proper second. Uh, Ms. Onlinen, call roll for adjournment.
Yes, sir. Malinowski?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes, ma'am.
Horatio?
Yes.
Manning. Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you also very much, and y'all have a wonderful rest of the evening.
Bye.
Bye.